May I raise your order, please, rise and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please silence call papers. Item one, adoption of the current board of supervisors bylaws. Anything to add or discuss?
I will move it.
Second.
Motion by Radek, second by Taylor, to adopt the current board of supervisors bylaws. Order discussion. Order say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Passes five zero. Number two, election of temporary chair to preside over election, oh passes four to zero, I'm sorry. Election of temporary chair to preside over election of chairperson.
Nominate Rocky DeWitt.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Taylor, to elect DeWitt temporary chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four to zero. Before we get to item three, I would like to just say that 2021 was another challenging year and it was comforting to know that I had four other board members to guide me through and help with that. And let's not forget the 400 or so county employees that make us look good. They stood up and rose to the challenges along with us from sheriff's office, secondary roads, and all the men and women that sit in this building and others that that take care of the board. So, thank you all. Item three, election of chairperson.
I would nominate Heath Radek.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, to elect Radek as chairperson for 22. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four to zero. Item four is election of vice, vice chair.
I believe that Mr. Radek can have it.
Then he can have it.
Thank you, sir.
No doubt. Does he need to repeat number four then, Mr. Gill?
All right. Moving on to item four, election of vice chair. Any nominations?
I will nominate Mr. Taylor to be vice chair.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Mr. Taylor as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes four to zero. Moving on to item five, which is citizens' concerns. Any citizens concerned with something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I'll move that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Radek, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items seven through 12 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item number seven is approval of the minutes of the December 21st, 2021 meeting. Item eight, approval of claims. Item nine, approval of the appointments of A, the county engineer, Mark Nara; B, the county medical examiner, Dr. Julie Briner; C, the county weed commissioner, Jared Jepson; D, the county official newspapers that were listed; E, county representation of the third judicial department of correctional services. Item 10, approval of
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
We haven't named who that person is for 9E.
I thought we had that named, I'm sorry. Who was, we had Munson before, wasn't it?
Yeah, and I've attended the third judicial department of correctional services meetings.
Okay, so it's like it's Jeremy Taylor? All right. Item 10, thank you for noticing that. 9E is Jeremy Taylor. 10A, the conservation board. That is a no to Susan Bowden, who is stepping off the board. We got 11, excuse me, 10B, Sealand District Board of Health. That was Rod Earlywine and Sandra Granger, both to be put on the board. And 10C? No, that was District Health, yeah, okay, 10C, mission to assess damages, Leo Yocum from Salix. For owners of agricultural property, category B owners of city property was Bob Bachelor and Ruth Growth, and category C licensed real estate salesman or broker. We have Colleen Baker, Anita Small, and Tori Jackson. Moving on to 12A from secondary roads, we have consideration of resolution authorizing the county engineer to execute certification of completion of work on federal aid, state aid, and farm-to-market destruction during 2022. 12B, consideration of resolution authorizing the county engineer to close roads for maintenance and emergencies during 2022. And 12C is approve the permit to work in the right of way for Dan Castle. Any other discussion on any items of the consent agenda?
Could you do item number 11?
Oh, gosh, sorry, thank you. Item 11, human resources, A is approval memorandum of personnel transactions; B, authorization to initiate hiring process; and C, approval of the chairman to sign the liability and property policies with Princeton Access and Travelers Insurance for calendar year of 2022.
I'd move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. That ends the consent agenda. Moving on to item 13 with secondary roads, Mark Nara, approval of consultant agreement for the Elk Creek paving project design services.
Mark Nara with Berry County Engineer. I just got back the edits recommended by our assistant county attorney from the consultant shortly before I came into the meeting here today. This agreement is for design of paving plans on Elk Creek Road. This is adjacent to the residences at Elk Creek subdivision. The board signed a letter of understanding of the city governing the disposal of the old jail, the old jail site, and the Elk Creek project. The county had agreed as part of that to do the design work on the paving adjacent to the project. The Elk Creek residence project, that is. I recommend the agreement with DGR for approval by the board. They've moved up the timetable for this paving out there. They had talked about it being three to five years out. They would like to do it next year now. Apparently they're developing faster than what had been anticipated, so my staff doesn't really have the time to do that work at this time. They also have all the topographic survey out there for the changes in grade we had from the original design project. And I think efficient use of county staff leads me to utilizing a consultant for this design. Total cost was not to exceed $47,000.
I'd move it.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero. All right, moving on to item 14 from the board of supervisors, approval of drafting letter to the Iowa Utilities Board stating opposition to any and all carbon pipelines traversing Woodbury County. Rocky, take her away.
The, I'm sure every supervisor has gotten calls, emails, and such, that I have yet to find one landowner that's interested in having this, this carbon pipeline, this high-pressure carbon pipeline go across their property. And I've just while the county property is involved or potentially involved, I haven't found anybody that's, that's in favor of it, and I would just ask approval to craft a letter just basically stating that as, as our constituents have been unanimous in opposition, I would like to craft a letter that, that states that and present it to the Iowa Utilities Board.
Mr. Chair. I'd echo the sentiments, but I would actually prefer we not take any action on this item until there's backup. I'm generally not the biggest fan of voting on things without seeing them, so would, would it be okay to bring this back if there's a, if there's a letter actually drafted?
I can do that.
Okay.
I can do that next week.
So, just take no action, defer that till next week. Moving on to item 15, budget review discussion for FY 2023. Item A is general, oh, you probably want to give a statement upfront, or?
Yeah. If I could, and a couple things I've included in the front folder of your packet. Okay, first, I always kind of do a recap of where it stands at the current time without any reduction.
I know, oh, I'm just gonna tell.
That's all right. If you want, I can read this. If not, you can review it, or we can just review the highlights of it. Our appropriations are going to be up. Grand total is 17 million. Don't let that bore you, because eight and a half million is the gravel project. We also have debt is up this year because we have the full blow with all the principal and interest payments, plus our additional lease payment embedded in here, so what you really need to look at is general basic, general sub, and rural basic. Those are our three cap funds. Debt service and mental health, which mental health will not exist anymore for a tax levy, it'll still exist in our budget as wages and benefits that we get reimbursed. And the debt service is what it is. Whatever our principal and interest and lease payments are, we're obligated to pay them, so that's kind of a moot issue there. We go to property tax askings. They will not directly correlate with your appropriations increase. There's a lot of factors going with this. That is taxes and revenues. You can see here in general basics, 3.765 million. General sub, it's only 2,0749. There's reasons for that. And your debt service is up 2,008,000. That is a little higher because we have the amendment, or the second lease, which is 400,000. We can levy through taxes. Right now, we're taking that out of cash reserves for the current year, so that's a one-time expense for us this year, then it goes on to debt service. Rural basic, 527,000. So you look at your tax rates there. If we do exactly what it is right as of today, our tax rate would go up 55 cents in general basic. It'd go down 12 cents in general sub. Then you can add those two together, basic is when we go to our cap, it's a general fund total, which includes general base and general sub. Rural basic, you can see that went up 29 cents per thousand. Like I say, these are all preliminary potential, but they'll be pretty much drastically reduced. But I have to give you the worst-case scenario. All of our numbers include all the improvement requests. Total is 720,000. Includes where we use cash reserves for the current year of 570,000. Obligation will reduce district health by that amount again. We'll get to that when we get to the reserves, when we start going through budgets. So, on the bottom side here, you can see the proposed expenditures. Those are ones in the biggest part of our budget have increased. You can kind of go through those. We have a loss of revenue of 320,000. 157 correctional facility, because they do not house federal prisoners now, because we don't have any room. A couple other factors there. Juvenile detention, we do not have any Native Americans occupying juvenile detention at this time. They've all pulled back or pulled away, so whenever you see a decrease of 320,000, that will come back as a tax increase. So, the correctional facility, sheriff's administration, that is in general basic. Juvenile care is in general sub. So, a little more dissertation there. Okay, and the next thing in your packet, there should be a list. I did include the valuation also, show you how the tax base did increase. For the whole county, it went up 5.1%, which is a very good increase. For the rural townships, it went up 3.6%. And when we come to Tiff, that went up 6.4%. Just to give you an idea of how it has increased, how we generate additional revenue. Then on the next page, there should be a set where it shows every budget, and the general basic, general sub, and rural basic, the increases in our departmental budgets. So you can kind of look through that, see where our big increases are, small increases. Like I say, improvement requests are all embedded in this. Improvement requests involve sheriffs, jail, additional deputy, conservation, tech there, and also wage adjustments in EOS, emergency services. So that kind of gives you an idea of our three tax funds. Those are the ones we really need to concentrate on. The other funds can sometimes help offset taxes, such as wholesale sales tax and gaming revenues. And then the last thing I want to point out, and I feel remiss if I don't point this out. I show you, I put the comp board's recommendations in here. You can see them on the first page. They should be in your packet there, the third set of numbers. That's addressed to Rocky. And you can see the percentage has increased there. Did you find it? Everybody, okay, percentage increases. This is the effect of those increases. These are all plugged into the budget until they're approved or disapproved, or whatever the board decides to do. This is what amounts to, it's in our budget already. And then the last page there, this is where it gets a little sticky here, is that the board has to, they can split out this board of supervisors away from all the other elected officials, which you have to do 30 days prior to our public hearing. If you go past that, then they're all lumped together and you approve them, you know, whatever you, you do across the board, percentage affects everybody, on the elected officials and their deputies. So I want to put that provision, I highlighted with the yellow there, where that actually is there. So I just want the board to be aware of this, that it is possible, break yours away. So, if I didn't say something, you went by to say, why didn't you say something? So, I'm saying something. But Rocky, or I mean, Jeremy.
When is the public hearing?
Public hearing, I think, is March, I got that in here. I believe it's March 28th. 29th. So you have to do it 30 days prior, so you'd probably be about the end of February.
No later than 30 days prior, correct?
Right. Yeah, if you go back like 29, 20, you can't do it. It has to be 30 days prior or before that.
In the past, haven't we had that public hearing in February?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, two public hearings, one in March, be about March 8th or 9th, where you actually do the tax asking. If you go above 2%, then you have to have a supermajority, which is four out of five supervisors vote for the budget. If you go under 2%, like 1.99, you only need three out of five, simple majority. It appears, the chances are, we'll probably go above the 2% because there's an awful lot of new expenditures there, and we'll get to those as we go through the budgets. But our big problem is, with no jail sitting there until July 1st of '23, it's impossible to anticipate federal revenue, federal prisoners through the 22, 23 budget. Health法set some of these requests are being made. Second, if there isn't any guarantee of revenue for federal prisoners, by the time we set the budget for the following year, that means we have a full impact, which we have a full impact without any federal money now. We know what it's going to be. Any federal money comes in now, goes 80% tax relief, 20% of maintenance fund, and then over that amount will go to whatever board decides to do. It could go for additional employees. It could go just to general, whatever you want to spend it on. But we have to attain a certain number to get where we at least cover our principal and interest, or additional lease payment. So then that amounts to about, we need, to make our payment, we need about 5,000,000, about 5,400,000. And that's a lot of prisoners. At $80 today, that comes to about 185 prisoners. We won't have that many. We can't house that many, because we've got to leave enough room for our people before, and if we sign a contract, that's locking a person in, but it does help us budgeting too, because we know for a year what it's going to be. So debt service is the worst-case scenario. That's, we've included everything possible on it, plus our new CIP for the current year is being projected. That's kind of where we're at. Any questions?
Regarding the mechanics of breaking away the supervisor's salary consideration from the others, is that done in one fell swoop in terms of breaking that away and recommending the difference?
The only thing you could act on then would be the supervisor's salary, if you break it out. The others are enacted or adopted, whatever, at the public hearing. So, example, if the board wanted to cut theirs in half now, this example, cut it in half, if you separate it, you can do your half, but then when you come to the public hearing, you can change the percentage. If you leave them all together, and the board wants to reduce theirs, whatever, it affects everybody by the same percent. It's cross-the-board cuts.
So you're saying if you separate it out, then the others don't get affected at all?
By whatever the board does on their own. They're enacted, two separate units. Otherwise, if you don't act there, they're all together at one field. And they can only be reduced, they can't say you reduce
They're all reduced as a percentage.
Approve these 100%. You, if you're going to do that, you can't do it. You'd have to separate it to do that. It's just food for thought on that, because you want to make a decision within the next month and a half, or whenever you want to make the decision, because you can do that anytime prior to the 28, or 30 days.
All right, any other questions on?
I got one more thing.
Sure.
Cash reserves, our cash reserves in general basic as of June 30th of 2021 is 23.5%. District health, we allow 25%. With that 23.5, I gave you three things that's affecting our cash reserves that are not figured into this. One is the 400,000 maintenance costs. We didn't put in debt service this year, so we're taking out reserves here. 717,000 are site prepping out the care facility, so now you're up to, what, a million one? Then you've got 300,000 for the Elk Creek Road. So when you take all three of those in consideration, at 23.5, we'll drop down to 18%. And just to remind you, we got double A3 because we had good reserves, and also we got good tax base growth. So with those three items out of our reserves, I highly recommend you don't touch reserves in those funds. Now, there's other reserves we can touch, like local option sales tax, gaming revenues. They could help our situation somewhat. But I just want to throw that in, because just to remind you, even though we're 23, that drops about 18 with those three items. And those three items are all one-time shots. They won't occur again, because the 400,000 are levying through debt service, and the other two are one-time. Site prep and Elk Creek Road. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
All right.
Would you like me to begin?
Yeah, well, let's go on with 15A1, general relief administration.
Hello, everybody. The administration line item is the same as it has been for several years. We're not asking for an increase, and that just helps us file the paperwork, take the applications for the program.
That has stayed the same ever since we had a relationship with them, with this type of administration, administrative, or B.
Well, we didn't even have to see you the last year or two here, it seems.
No.
I know.
She just likes to see you.
And anytime that we're ready to move to number two, which is the assistance itself, I would like to talk to you about that. And just to remind you, with the CARES Act money, we did get federal community services block grant money through the CARES Act, and general relief has always been the funding that we use of last resort. So it has been, we have not had to tap this funding hardly at all. There has been, through Iowa Finance Authority, a program that pays for rent and for utilities up to 14,000 to $3,000 for rent. So we have just not seen the request in those areas. There's also a FEMA program that's paying for burials now, so those are normally our highest expenses. And Western Iowa Tech, we do some classes and some books normally. They got funding, and so they're, they're paying for, I think it's like 60 programs free. So, we've really been able to tap just about every other funding source that we possibly can. I think this year so far, we've only spent about $30,000 for people that don't qualify for anything else. But I would like to ask for the same amount of funding that we have received prior, because all this funding ends September 30th, and all bets are off at that point in time. I think we'll probably see an uptick then. Do you have any questions, maybe, about what general assistance maybe covers, or?
So we're on page two here?
Yeah. Yeah, we, I'll just say we've moved on to 15A2 assistance.
You have to prove these separate.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
That's, this is to receive, correct?
Correct, everything is received.
I'll move to receive A1.
Second.
All right, motion by Radek, second by Ung. Any other discussion on A1? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four zero. Now, A2, go ahead with your question.
So, the request is for 100,000, is that right? And then, so far, we're at just shy of 33,000, and then the two years prior is 54 and 86. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, can you tell us again, you're requesting the 100,000 because you believe that what will happen?
All of the programs that have, that we have been able to use that have deferred us spending this money are ending September 30th. And so, burials, for example, are pretty costly per person, and we have had a lot of those burials, but if they're COVID-related at all, those are covered by FEMA now. We can do anywhere from probably 14 to 30 burials in a year. So, if those programs are extended, we'll probably be under our 100,000. If that's not the case, then we'll probably be back to spending money for the rent, utilities, and the burials. Those will be the highest expenses that we have. There's also a water program that can assist people that qualify for our energy assistance program. Now, it's also a pilot that will end at September 30th. So really, I think, not knowing what Congress is going to do, that's why I'm still hoping to have the $100,000 this year to work with. I hope we don't have to, we won't spend it if we don't have to. We've proven that, but I, I'm just worried that if all the programs end, we still might have people out there that need them.
And our fiscal year starts July 1st, so potentially about three months' time. And 100,000 is what we normally approve
Yes.
Annually.
And you can notice in the last two years, there are actual expenses. What's left over goes back into general basic reserves.
We haven't spent over 86 the last three years, is that right?
That's correct. But we haven't had, what she's explaining, in the September, there's no clue what's going on.
I, I have federal CARES Act money, and there's also several other, Iowa Finance Authority has rental assistance and mortgage assistance that's available and has been the last couple of years. All of that ends September 30, '22. So, we'd have three quarters of the year that we don't really know what we're going to have yet.
So potential to put it down to 75? Because that's a quarter of the year, is what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I, even back in 86, when it was 86,000, that was pre-COVID, right?
Yeah.
I just, I don't like budgeting more than we need to. I know it goes back in reserves, but even if it was 85, I mean, that was sort of our, the worst of the three years.
And, and we've told these people, and also Veterans Affairs, if we do cut it back, they need money, come back to the board, because they're not going to let people sit out there without relief like this, or the vets, too. So it's kind of a roll a little bit of the dice. You can cut it back. If they run out of money, they'll be back. But it shows, like you're saying, they only spent 86,000 before all this other stuff came about.
Well, in the following year, just go right back to the 100,000. It's just for budgeting purpose, if we can shave half a cent off here on the levy. That's kind of the thinking of
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable going at 85. I still think that that's north toward the highest that we've been in the last three years.
Oh, with three months on there, you, oh, cut it in the middle, even 80? I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I'd feel comfortable there. I don't know, whatever, anybody else think?
I'd rather. I get the concept, but I think I'd still rather err on the, on the higher side because if we do have to have a budget amendment, it should be paltry.
Sure.
Show it at the eighty-five instead of eighty?
I'd support eighty-five.
Okay.
We can always bring it back a review if we need to shave anything, I don't know. I mean, it's.
I say we go with eighty-five.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And come back if it goes over, of course.
Okay, it goes down fifteen thousand. I have her giving the new numbers to where she wants to divide this up in the line. You're just reducing the allocation. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I would move to receive at eighty-five.
Second, motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes four to zero. All right, moving on to B one, CF rebates miscellaneous refunds, that's just, let's see.
Okay, you can look at page two or fifty-eight, but these are things we have to do. Previous boards, previous board that made the development agreement agreed that we give our share of the excise tax back. The excise tax keeps getting a little bit bigger every year. The problem we have, I have to put an estimate in there and then hope the tax rate doesn't go way higher. If it goes lower, it's our benefit because we'll have money left in the reserves there. But if it doesn't, stays this, that's what we need. And this goes on for, I think, for the next seventeen years. So this is something we don't have any choice on. We just have to put money in there so we can cover the excise tax refund. And I do, you know, proportionally between the general basic I have since we started and the real basic based on rates. They take their tax rates times whatever the value is in our share of it. And we're the only ones giving this back. School district doesn't do it or any other taxing body, it's just us.
I'll move to receive B one.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Ung, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B two, medical examiner, it's on page four.
Okay, this number here, we raised it fifty-nine thousand. The reason is, you go back two years and see this two hundred fifty-eight thousand fiscal year twenty, two hundred sixty thousand fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. This year is running pretty much on target what it was the last six months of, of the last year. Heather looked that up, she's been researching this. And then, so two ten probably and won't cover our medical examiner costs. So we did raise it, or I raised it up to two sixty-nine, but I suppose you could cut nine thousand off that or even nineteen thousand, go to two fifty. Thing is, if we don't have enough money, again, we have to amend the budget and go to reserves. But you look back to two previous years and see where we're at. Two fifty-eight, sixty, fifty-six thousand. Now, medical examiner was asked to come, but she thought it was too short a nose last Thursday. So she wants to come when the emergency services comes in, because they got a plan. Potentially have one of their people be an investigator on these medical examinations. Do you have anything to add to that?
She's been in talks with Andrew from emergency services about this new role as one of the paramedics. It could help with some of the costs. It could help Julie out or Dr. Brian around a little bit with some of these invoices and investigations. But she's on board with that, but it should help in the next fiscal year. But this year is about the same. She said this year's trending a little lower than last year, but a little higher than twenty nineteen. Also, our transportation costs have gone up this year for the funeral homes. For Iowa code that changed, so it was five hundred dollars from here to Ankeny. And that's what we were, you know, that's what we had the agreement with the funeral homes. But that was just one way. Iowa code changed it to where the county is responsible for both ways now. So each transport to Ankeny is about nine hundred dollars now instead of five hundred. So that went up.
Andrew and I, or Rocky and I sat down with Andrew and heard some of his proposal. And so I would, you know, if we move to receive at two sixty or whatever it is, I'd like to kind of flag this if we can and have him come back.
Kind of wrap up or something?
Yeah, and see, yeah, what, what does that proposal exactly look like so we don't lose this potential? If you say, okay, well, by having the county or a county paramedic do the transport, this is what would be saved.
We could bring this back when you do the emergency services and bring this at that time also.
I just don't want to lose it, you know, like this.
Right.
So can you make a note?
Well, I'll move to receive at a two sixty for them.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B three, more supervisors expenses.
This budget here, it comes as the board of supervisors, wages, benefits and fiscal off, things like that throughout here. You can see the line items there, the breakdown of their dues and memberships. It's up sixty-four thousand, eight twenty-seven. Most of that is with the compensation board recommendation. That raised it up to sixty-two thousand. So actually, on an overall budget, you're up two thousand dollars. The big increase basically is wages and benefits, bike and diapers.
On the audit. And ten thousand on the audit.
Yeah. Yep. And they have to, when they do outside the auto federal programs or is a charge for that, that's right in our contract. So I want to make sure we have enough there, but down the road, it is getting better with the Taylor, Tyler system. It's helped a lot.
Then as you plugged in twenty-two percent?
Yes. I have to plug in what the comp board approved until you do something with it.
There's no way, in my estimation, that this board gives itself a twenty-two percent pay raise. I don't know. But can we move to receive it with something other than twenty-two percent?
Not till you have, do your, you know, set aside this, you can't do it. You have to break it out apart, then you can do it.
Well, we'll receive this and then.
You can receive it and then whenever you decide if you want to break it out, then you can do the supervisors. But it stands right now, I have to put in what the comp board recommended until you prove it, reduce it, whatever you do with it.
At the public hearing.
Huh?
At the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. If you don't break it out, it's all approved at the public hearing.
Well, I plan to break it out next week, but until then. We just moved to receive.
That'll be, that'll have to be agenda, I didn't be voted on too.
Yes.
Yes.
Question on dues and memberships, what was, was anything taken out?
Not that I'm aware of.
Seeing that it's a decrease?
You weren't caring on that, what was taken out, if anything? These all add up to the nineteen, so I don't think NACO's in there, GFOA's in there, then these other ISACs in there. ISAC for the board, because they have different fillies like all elected officials. Then Semco, Hunger Canyon, Good Roads are all the ones you have done before.
Well, it's, it's down thirty-nine hundred, I'm just wondering where that's from.
I'd have to go back, Matthew, look, see what we had last year, see what the difference is. And I can do that.
Okay. Professional services, up seven thousand, what's under that?
Well, you have any, Karen?
I'm sorry?
We're on the board expense. We had seven thousand there for board expense, or sixteen thousand, up seventy-two hundred. I'll make a note of both those. So you went up seven thousand there, seventy-five, two hundred there, and you went down thirty-nine hundred there.
Is there any reason we can't go down to two thousand for cell phone? If we haven't exceeded seventeen hundred in the last three years? We've got it budgeted at three thousand.
Seems reasonable.
And then on school of instruction, we're averaging about four hundred and it's at three thousand.
Now there, a lot of people didn't go to ISAC. I think they'll start going again. We also have NACO.
But this is just for supervisors, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah, definitely. And you got NACO coming up, I think.
Does anybody go into NACO?
Not planning on it, I haven't looked at the dates.
I mean, even if we went to fifteen hundred, it just seems like pretty healthy for.
So fifteen hundred on cell phone and maybe like two thousand on school instruction or?
Yeah, or I thought the reverse, like two thousand on cell phone. Because you had seventeen sixty three years back and then fifteen hundred on school of instruction. That's still a lot of ISAC and NACO.
You're twelve sixty currently on your cell phone.
That's halfway through the year?
Yes. These are pretty much all halfway through the year when I printed them. Now, this was done December twentieth, so there was probably two more claim periods where claims would have come in. If you're at eighteen hundred, I'd kind of leave that three thousand in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe go down to fifteen hundred on school of instruction anyway?
Well, on something like that, you're kind of splitting the P and if we're going to come back and revisit the twenty-two percent, the big part, I think we could just receive this as is and come back to it.
Can you flag that?
Yep.
Kind of keep this running list, maybe?
Yep.
I'll move to receive. Second. Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, anyone to have any other questions on that? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B four, board administration, page.
Has up eighty-eight hundred to one percent. Included all these budgets right now for wage plan is two point seven five. So that does include two point seven five and all union contracts wherever they're at with their step increases.
I will move to receive B four.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, any discussion or things, anyone wants to flag on there? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B five, public bidder on page thirteen. Really.
Actually went down twenty-five percent, dropped a thousand bucks on professional services. If there's any questions, basically Heather could, you know, address those. We never know on public sales. Well, as public sales go through, everybody wants to bid on, which is good, so we gain a little more money. But you can't predict it.
I'll go ahead and move to receive that.
Second.
All right, motion by Raddick, second by Ung, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, and that passes four to zero, moving on to B six, mail services, that's page fourteen.
We left that the same, basically, I believe, talking with Karen, there's going to probably be rate increase within the next year. Who knows where that'll go?
Move to receive it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B seven, district court operations, it's on page forty.
This here includes parking, this is all general stuff, includes parking basically for the judges and also telephone expense, which we do get reimbursed, as you can see above there, reimbursed in twenty-three thousand, spend twenty-three. So the judges used to park behind, I think there's one or two still behind the LEC, rest from over here at the Sioux Car Park. Down the road, that will go up because we're going to be losing the LEC parking down the road, but that's two years away.
Move to receive. Second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four to zero, moving on to B eight, court-appointed juvenile attorneys, page forty-one.
Okay, what this is, we pay juvenile attorney base and then anything after that, we have to pick up. So, and as you can see, it's stated two thirty-eight, two forty, we've already paid the base. So now we just pay additional attorney fees, which is an undetermined amount. So we had it raised at ten thousand because we're two fifty-two already. That leaves us eight thousand the rest of fiscal year to pay additional attorney fees. Metal health, we dropped that ten thousand, so we have a wash there. In metal health, we don't know where that goes every year because that's an expense that is passed back to the county. So we left the main budget five hundred fifty bucks down. And again, all you're doing is receiving these at the amounts there or reduce them or increase them. But in this case, we just switch ten thousand around.
How's that year-to-date activity so high?
On the attorney fees, that's who we paid our base.
Wow.
That's around two hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay. I'll move to receive, second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Ung, on B eight, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B nine, youth guidance services on page forty-two.
Yeah, on this one here, I did drop it fifty-five thousand, I looked at history. And a hundred sixty-five went down to a hundred and six and this year we're down to twenty-six. That's current, so these are undetermined costs again because they're court-ordered kids that go to Toledo or somewhere like that. So we want to leave enough in there to cover us, so we aren't short. But we dropped it, it used to be at two hundred thousand, went to a hundred seventy-five, now we're going to a hundred twenty. We're gradually working down just so we don't have a lot of kids that get court-ordered. So we did drop that fifty-five thousand.
I'll move to receive it.
Second.
Any other discussion on B nine? A motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, go ahead.
So do, do we think that's dropping down enough? I mean, if we're halfway through the year and it's fifty-two thousand?
A lot of times, Jeremy, the cost increases toward the second half of the year, toward April, May, June. Now, again, we can look at this, you know, in a couple of months before we actually go to publication. And then we even look at a public, at the public hearing, you still reduce there also.
Right.
Or increase? I think he's asking if we should increase it.
No, no, no.
Or decrease it even more.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because I'm looking, I mean, if we're at, I know the expenses coming in the second half of the year, but the year before was a hundred or six. I, I understand there is a one sixty-five, even if you do the three-year average, you're more at like one oh five, but.
Behind you is a five-year, six, almost six, five years, I guess.
Okay.
That's the fiscal year breakdown, so your activity is going to show the activity for each fiscal year.
And you can see what was budgeted.
Is there a reason, though, it's going down? And, I mean, you go one ninety-one, one ninety-six, one sixty-five, one oh six, and now let's call it fifty-two. I know that the expenses are coming in the latter half of the year, I get it, but.
I think they changed the law where when it started dropping there, that you can't take juveniles out of state, they had to stay in state.
Okay.
That just rings a bell with me there, that's what happens. So again, you know, we look at it in February, see if we have any more additional costs and review it again and cut it more or at the public hearing.
Who would know the answer to that?
Possibly Gary Niles.
Okay.
Can give him a call and ask him.
Might be a worthy thing to ask and see.
Can we add that to the list, so to speak?
List of.
Yep. You can receive it, what it is, and come back for review.
Well, we had a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, and let's see, now we're moving on to, is it B ten, risk management services on page forty-three.
Okay, here, I raised it six hundred or sixty thousand dollars. The year before I did that, we reduced it to eight forty. Our liability insurance went up, I think, thirty-one thousand, that's paid out of there. Also, we have a pending lawsuit. It could be upwards to over a certain six-digit number. So, and we need some reserves in lawsuits or if we don't have money in there or increase costs, that we would have to sell judgment bonds. And I don't think we really want to get into that with. And I don't think we really want to get into that, we'd better have some balance in that liability fund. Usually at the end of the year, we may have a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand.
And the current balance is what again?
Currently, we haven't taken any money out of it yet. We do that as a lump sum transfer over to the liability fund. And right now, the liability fund's in the red because I haven't transferred the money over. It's in the red about a hundred and eighty-five thousand, I believe. So when I transfer, it still leaves about six hundred and some thousand. But like I say, we got something sitting there pending and our liability insurance goes up. Is there any other costs there possibly going up?
I think workers' compensation.
Workers' comp also, so... Yeah, the big increase, but the increase is probably needed to cover what's coming up so we don't run, you know, run dry on the balance.
I'd move to receive.
Second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to page fifty-four, which is fifteen, uh, B eleven, Rolling Hills.
In this case here, we are not levying any taxes next year. This is the second phase, a two-part phase of levying any tax levy in all the counties. So in a way, this has been kind of a godsend because as we reduce this, it covers our payment for our principal and interest administration or maintenance costs that we have to levy in debt service. So you can see, when you go back to this sheet I handed out, you see where on our debt service, it's up two point eight million. We're dropping two point seven nine million and the difference there basically is our CIP and the four hundred thousand we've never levied before. But we are in the future. So with this, we budget the payroll and stuff. We were notified today that their region's gonna have four percent increase. We plugged two point seven five, but in our case here, it doesn't matter because they could put in fifty percent, they reimburse for what our cost. There's no cost to the county. So right now, there's four percent plugged in those and it's just reimbursable. They write, cut us a check for what the budget is or expenses are. And Fund Ten will actually go to Fund O six, it's gonna be under the general base, or general fund entirety. But they're gonna have their own fund like we do for gaming revenue, for care and keep of prisoners, things like that. There's subsidiary fund of the general fund. We just keep adding funds to the general fund.
So this spends down one fund and we're reimbursed into a different one?
Well, this hall will be in Fund Six now. They just gave us the numbers today to change over, so Ten will cease to exist, it'll be in Fund Six. But there's no tax ramifications to Woodbury County. It's a reimbursable expense until the state changes it.
So do we need to make any of those adjustments for the four, or do we just go ahead and prove it as is?
Yeah, prove it as is, because the region sets their own wages there, basically.
Move to receive it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B twelve, Soil Conservation, page sixty.
Okay, this one here is a rural basic. I took the liberty to, you know, use local option sales tax. We funded this from local option sales tax for several years now and they're asking it's still the same, thirty-nine thousand. I don't know if they had a representative here. They thought they might, but didn't show up. But it's the same as it was the last several years. They have not raised it and we funded through local option sales tax. I've already figured that in my calculations, the tax levy for rural basic and also obligating money at the transfer from local option.
I'd move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes three to zero. Moving on, or four to zero, excuse me.
Which one of us dropped off?
Moving on to B thirteen, Solid Waste Landfill, page sixty-four through sixty-six.
Okay, I included some other sheets here, we'll figure out the allocations per town and also by township here. I got town, town, okay. Our share for the county will be a hundred and ninety thousand, it's down, it used to be around two hundred and thirty thousand. The reason there's a shift is population shift. The rural township's lost population, towns gained population. And when that happens, our rate went down. Also, when you see on the next page, you can see a comparison between last year and this year on what the supervisors gave. So last year, we gave two hundred and twenty-three thousand, last year, I call it this year. Next year, we're at a hundred and ninety, this is on page sixty-five. But you can see how these towns vary quite a bit. You know, there's a big variance. You look at Sergeant Bluff, they've all been notified what they're supposed to pay and that's the problem when you grow and you don't grow. When you grow, your per diem goes up, when you lose, your per diem goes down. So that, you can see the examples there, I showed the cities and the Woodbury County. And then also, we don't, the landfill passed a couple of years ago that we don't charge gill hauling rent anymore. So we went back to the towns and each town pays their share per capita of the sixty thousand. Our share of that is twenty-four thousand eight fifty, the towns make up the difference. There's only two towns in the county don't, aren't in the landfill, Smithland and Port... They go to Monona County, but I heard Monona County might be shutting theirs down, so they're gonna be looking for a place to go, I would assume. But that's why ours dropped, others increased. Called growing pains.
Well, I'll move to receive it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B fourteen, Township Officers.
This one reduced a thousand, cause you see it's fifty-one hundred, forty-six hundred so far this year, eighteen hundred. But normally, when claims come in, when they certify their budgets to the auditor, they turn in claims, but hopefully five thousand be enough. We dropped it to a thousand.
I'll move to receive.
Second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to B fifteen, Tax Increment Funds, page eighty-two, is that right?
Correct. This, well, you can actually start with eighty-one, cause I'll show you why, you know, there's variance here a little bit and increases. On page eighty-one, that's where we used to pay the rebate that we, the previous boards had agreed to, give them eight hundred thousand back, four hundred, two hundred each year for four years. This is the last year, so that is dropped from your increment fund. The next page you'll see is a million one seventy-three. That is up, two reasons. One is our TIF loan of three hundred and eighty-three thousand a year. That ends, I think, in three years, so I free up more TIF money. Also, the gravel project is seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight fifty, that comes from TIF. Second Road throws in three hundred thousand, makes a payment on principal and interest. So I've already talked and that's agreement we made a long time when this project just started. So that's why, three hundred from him, transfer to debt service fund and this money here gets transferred over to debt service. Tax rebates on page eighty-three is actually the rebate to platinum grain, I think there's two. So that, they pay taxes and we rebate increment taxes, one half of the increment taxes, they, we pay back to them after they pay their taxes. And they've been always good at that. So that'll cease to exist in two, three years. And then twenty thousand for attorney fees, I dropped that down dramatically from what's being spent because the twenty thousand we spent, if we ever changed, like Crowe, Woodbury County, add TIF districts, anything, we got some money there to pay for the attorney fees. And we did have fifty thousand, but I dropped that to thirty, but this is all from TIF funds. And I looked at our TIF release, this current year coming up, we're releasing sixty-six percent to tax reductions. And we used, what, thirty-four percent? So back to what Jeremy had, you know, proposed that policy, we did adopt a policy, we are following it even greater than what was proposed.
Out of curiosity, if we were to approve the wind deal that Glazer's brought forward and we get some major project announced and I guess if we were gonna amend that TIF district to include where windmills were...
Yeah, if you amend it, throw all that in, determine, be determined what, now that's following twenty-four, twenty-seven, that they're locally assessed.
Would the legal, would the legal fees ever exceed that twenty thousand, you think, for something like that?
Possibly, cause then you're going to every parcel where these sit, taxing district, cause you have to create taxing districts for each one, you've got to each separate different tax rates.
There are a lot of what ifs in that scenario and I guess we could always go to reserves, so I'll move to receive it as is.
Second.
All right, motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any other discussion on this items? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to fifteen C, County Library, which is page two to five of that tab.
County Library, they have their separate board, they have their separate public hearing. What they certify to the board basically is what the townships request. Or what they request from the townships. And I got it broke down on page four, shows you what it is for allocations to each town. Not every town belongs to the county library, they can withdraw through an election, but they can be added through an election. Right now, this is where it stands with six towns and then the townships are taxed a hundred and seventy thousand. That actually is... Up forty-five hundred and eighty-four dollars, mostly benefits and wages. And they set their own wages out there, I think they came close to three percent.
And this is funded from taxing the cities or...
Townships.
Okay.
Yeah, townships only, yep. And there aren't many county libraries in the state of Iowa. There's just a handful of them.
Well, isn't it by Iowa code, a city's required to have a library?
Yes.
And this is kind of a way to get all our cities a library?
Yep. Now, I don't know for sure, some of these towns, like Odo's not in there. I know they don't have a library, but they may fall in a criteria of population where they aren't required to have it. But you got several towns, I think Sergeant Bluff's got a library, I believe Sloan's got a library. A lot of these do have their own libraries. The biggest contributor is Mobile. But then the county library sits right there, so it's ideal for them. And they do have a book mobile or that goes out, I think that was bought a few years ago, that goes out to the township, also to the rural towns that are affected here.
I'd move to receive.
Second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to fifteen D, Department of Human Services on page one of that tab.
We contacted them and they wanted to leave their asking the same. And a lot of their purchases come in the second half of the year when they find out how much money's left and then they purchase possibly desks, chairs, whatever.
You showed us down a little bit there, right? Am I not seeing the same thing?
Should be, you gotta go, see there's revenue up there, three...
Oh, sure, I got you.
Yeah, you gotta go to the total expense item, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, thousand eight hundred, same as last, current year.
I'll move to receive it.
Second for discussion.
Uh, motion by Raddick, second by Taylor.
So on the last three years, we're at a hundred and seventeen ninety-six and if you doubled this out, seventy-six. Though you're saying some of the expenses occur in the latter half of the...
Yes.
Okay.
You'll see a lot of business, or a lot of offices elected or department heads, see how much they have toward the end of the year. Then they go out and get things they need, cause they know they have the money. A lot of them will spend their budget, they can do it.
I kind of almost feel like any more on any of these things, magazines and books just needs to go away, cause everyone's on their phone everywhere you go, anyway.
Well, they didn't spend any so far this year.
And in FY twenty-one, they, they didn't even get up to a hundred thousand when they got to the point where they were buying things they wanted, you know?
Right now, they're almost forty-two, well, they're forty-two thousand seven hundred currently.
On what's that?
Their expenditures this year.
By halfway, double that, you're at eighty-four, right?
Yep.
Ninety-four. Forty-seven, is that what you said?
I thought it was forty, what did you?
Two times two is...
Okay, sorry, I thought you said forty-seven.
I, I think, I think we could go at least down to one fifteen, if not one ten. I mean, one of the problems is if you have a budget, people will spend the budget, right?
Well, probably. Cause we always look back at history. So if we see history there and look at their current year, you know, they'll spend it. Because they've been approved to spend it.
Move to receive minus fifteen thousand eight hundred.
Second.
Well, it was already moved at second.
Oh, sorry.
We can just do an adjustment of that.
To fifteen eight, then?
No, we just moved it for discussion, so...
Okay.
I guess if you amend it.
Yeah, so. Move to amend my motion. So what, what is it?
Fifteen eight.
Fifteen eight.
So you're knocking down a hundred and ten thousand. Just withdraw the motion.
Okay, so yeah, well, I'll withdraw my motion, who had the second was DeWitt, wasn't it? No, Taylor, you, so I'll withdraw that and we'll get the new one.
So it's to receive down...
Fifteen thousand eight hundred.
So we had Ung and Taylor on the new motion. Any other discussion on that?
Magazines and books, though, I mean, should, should probably.
I'll have to go back to ask them whether they want to take it out and that might be one of the takeout. Can you go to the internet and see a lot of that, too?
I just can't think of the last waiting room or place I've been and didn't see, nobody gets up out of the chair, they're all on the phone, so... All right, well, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero, moving on to fifteen E, Human Resources, fifteen thousand eight hundred, general basic, page two to four.
Well, everything pretty much has stayed the same. I did eliminate magazines and books this year. Talk about that. Everything we need as far as information is on the internet and secretly everything else has stayed the same.
How are you finding NeoGov to work?
I think it's fine. They've increased a little bit every year, but I consider that service, as well as governmentjobs.com is where they actually go to apply. Is used widely throughout the state and also gives us, you know, pretty good coverage throughout the area.
Okay.
I'll move to receive, looks like the only changes really are in the benefit packages.
Right, our insurance is flat this year, so that's a good thing.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Ung. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes four to zero.
Okay, that concludes what I have today. We got a lot of things out there that's like easy. Next week, it's a little more difficult, cause we got conservation, they got improvement requests, you got the auditor with Stable, Percy Services, I believe with Echo Xander coming also then. County Treasurer shouldn't be bad in civil service. And next week isn't too bad. Then the eighteenth, we get in some pretty heavy stuff, Sheriff, County Attorney Building Services, whatever.
I was gonna ask, are we, what's the pleasure of the board in terms of improvement requests? You know, we've kind of done it both ways, where we've taken them as they've come and other times, we've said, we're not gonna talk about this right now, we'll talk about it at the end, based on our tax position, so that's just an open-ended question.
Did you plug them all in already, Dennis?
Yes. Cause I didn't want, especially when you got a half a million dollar increase, I didn't want that popping up later. And we have to, everything you did, we just wiped out by putting it back in. So it's better to get the worst-case scenario and start deleting. And the sheriffs, you want to talk about them raw, cause they'll come up anyway. Improvement request totaled seven hundred and twenty thousand, the back of your book, I got a preface page there, shows where they're at, what they are, and also the individual breakdown. With the sheriff, and this is just discussion, no action whatsoever, the sheriff is asking for twenty new people staggered off and on, coming on, starting December of twenty-one, twenty-two, then January, February, March. That totals about fifteen, five hundred and fifteen thousand... Then January, February, March, that totals about fifteen, five hundred and fifteen thousand. My thoughts there are, and they're just mine only, is without federal prisoners, that's going to be a tax increase. And there won't be any federal prisoners then. So, the thoughts are, and you think about this, is that we go ahead, the board approve it with a stipulation. If they're in federal prisoners coming, we don't have signed contracts. It's hard to hire twenty people when you're coming down July first and there's no federal prisoners. What do you do with twenty people? But if there is need for it, for one year only, take it out of cash reserves, you know, whatever. He's got like three plans there. Keep going down. This was a high plan. He has about three plans going down, lesser people, lesser dates. But it's kind of all up in the air a little bit because this is all brand new and a new facility. But instead of taxing for it, if the need comes up and he justifies the need to you people, that for the first year, for twenty-two, twenty-three, we use cash reserves. I hate using that because it's an ongoing expense, but the following year, we're going to tax for it. And the following year, when you proate these people up and what he's presenting, it's going to be about one point three to one point four million. And that's a tax increase because we have no other way until we get federal money. But the federal money goes first toward the rent, two rents, and...
See, another thing, we're not even positive, there, there's no set in stone that we're going to open that new LEC on July of twenty-three either.
No.
Well, that seems like it...
Conservation has one, Eagle, Mercy Service has one.
Right. These seem like really good discussions for another day. I just wonder how we want to take this. Do we want to say we're not improving any improvement requests to the end and make your case then? Maybe that's something...
Just pull them out as we do them. And I guess when we get their budget or, I, I feel like most of them, I'm going to support pulling out, but anyway.
I, I've always preferred to have them outside of the initial proposal, which we haven't done the last couple of years. But even so, it looks like there's sixty-nine thousand from conservation, eighty-eight from emergency services. The bulk is going to be a humdinger of a discussion with the sheriff's office. So, I don't know if it matters too much as far as taking the other two out. They're, they're kind of, they're definitely a minority of, of these requests. So, maybe we just digest those two ahead of time and we can always circle back.
So, take them up as they come?
Yeah. I don't, I don't mind as much this time since there's not several different departments.
You'll have two, the two he mentioned, conservation, Mercy Service will be up next week.
All right.
The other big one, which Matthew says is going to be a lot of discussion.
That's how we'll tackle those as they come. They are already included in the projections of the budget.
And my other question is, can we get, as of next week, this is all right with you, Mr. Chair, where the tax levy sits? Where it sat, pre-actions this week and where it sits next week?
Talking about the colored sheets I usually have.
Yeah.
And I also have this updated to your tax asking, asking. It won't show the rates here. The rates will be a separate issue. Okay, but this will show you. I'll update this every week to show how we're coming on our bottom line.
I think it's motivating.
All right, so moving on to item sixteen, reports on committee meetings. No one had any, right?
Yes, quick question going back. When is the sheriff's office scheduled to be on the budget review?
Scheduled January eighteenth. We have the sheriff, county attorney, building services, secondary roads, and then our gaming revenues, infrastructure, debt service, which is fair juvenile detention, and three other small ones. Eighteenth's a big day.
All right.
So, drink a lot the seventeenth.
If you don't want a headache, you'll get one here.
Any other committee?
Yeah, I was at Rolling Hills last week and I, I asked, while I was there, I was asking Dennis and Melissa what responsibility we have to county employees with the, in the event that we don't have a, you know, what are we going to do with those employees? And would you mind what you came up with on that, with our twenty-eighty and so forth? They are county employees, but it's still...
They are county employees according to the twenty-eighty, which I'm sorry I wasn't prepared. I don't have it. Um, we are to be reimbursed for wages, workers' compensation, and benefits. As I mentioned, when he brought up as an employee, and I don't know what would happen in the future to that employee and where they would be and then...
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it was a, it was a discussion item at the, at the governance board meeting. So, I just wanted to say that to this day, it's clear as mud on what's going to happen with some of this issue. So, pass that. I don't have anything on committee.
The question I raised in correlation with Rocky there is, the state's never determined, are they going to be county employees, region employees, or state employees? The state's taken over the whole shoot man. So, and I talked to Dawn, Dawn, and she hadn't determined from their information what kind of employees they are. Right now, they're county until it changes by then. So, as usual, when the state takes over something this massive, it's a very difficult challenge for them. There's a lot of unanswered things they did not pass in legislation.
All right, any other committee meetings? Moving on to round two, Citizen Concerns. Moving on to Board Concerns. All right, seeing none, we're adjourned.
You learn after...